video what is up everybody my name is and welcome to a study session and I am sorry for confusion but I am currently using Twitch and if you want to see my Twitch channel and me doing like video game stuff or whatever do that and it's on Thursdays on Thursday nights and I will link into make you guys what exactly that time is during that during that day or yesterday if I can actually wake up correctly so we found a further undo let's get on with this so the first thing I wanted to do is look into a protein I wish to look into because I've been messing around with the protein database for for a long while so I decided to go into the NNCBI or the pub Kim pub Kim is really good wait why am I looking at I might look at jeans I need proteins correct so we got ourselves a bunch of proteins and a lot of different types so we so we got ourselves oxydine oxy or diet is transferred diet is hydrolysis lysis I used so mirrors like us we guess and some of these are really really much impossible to try to translate so let's go with the one that sounds very unique to me so let's go with the license so we got carbon 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 oxygen carbon nitrogen carbon sulfide is carbon highlight okay that sounds interesting then phosphorus oxygen the one that speaks to me the most is the carbon lysis says so we got the hydro acting on phone polyacridates that sounds interesting so we got two here so one of them is from okay it looks like both of these are from bacteria so we got E coli and then we got stare forest no what is that what what taxonomy is this oh it's a bacteria that's fine but what does it do so let's look at this weird bacteria one so hydrolite my size so next I need to look at its structure so this is from the drug bank so apparently it does have a few protein okay so this is where it gets interesting so we got several different species of it it looks like we got a mutant version and let's see here hundred straight late dang we actually got quite a bit I think we got about okay we got around nineteen of them oh boy so when looking at the 3D structure we gotta look at 4D oh zero Q so 4D zero Q let's look at this first one so this is not gonna say that name but when looking at the 3D view it will give us some interesting aspects of it so we got the thing itself it only has one chain so it's a one part so it's a one part enzyme which means that it is a tertiary structure is what it is so we got this order which I don't know what that means so it's it's features so this must be in a I think this must be you from a DNA analyzation and it has a one ligament and that is a oxide group which in its name is one two ethanidial now let's look at this shall we so this is known as Edo or one two acid deal which is actually it looks like a very very simple compound it also has a bunch of references to we got uh what I really wanna look at is usually in human metabolism but apparently that's not the trick and this is coming from this protein so what does this protein actually do is what I want to say that's its sequence so let's look at its bioanalysis so we got bioanalysis aid so inhibition of spectral causes premium high days after one hour by micro plate read reader analysis what do we got here so this is the description provided by this this president how quaint so it says here's an important component of extra cellular matrix and are involved in micro microbial spread hydyl inhibitor may serve as a tool to study the role of the enzyme is substrate and product to the course of the bacterial infection so this thing is involved in bacterial spread and metabolism moreover such enzyme inhibitors are potential candidates before antibacterial combination combination therapy based on the crystal structure of this of this bacterial hydol in a complex with a hexal hexa saccharide substrate in a different inhibitor which is this thing weird which which is this name we were deprived as new leads for inhibition inhibit in in a brick strain four seven five five hydol optimization is one of the potent compounds known to date hang on a moment I need to learn uh let's look at this bacteria here for a moment let's let's step back a bit so among the twenty seven nude wow so it looks like this thing has a pH of seven point four so it's basic among other NXL visas tools and visas are just as active at pH seven point four but not at five there's result the results support a binding characteristic characterized by interaction with residue in a cannoli site and with a hydrophobic patch interesting so we got ourselves another data table with the CID and SID but it has a pumpkin thing going on so the protein target is this hydrolytic with the same taxi nominee so TGR is actually some some kind of basic formality no not um basic formality it's it's a bacteria is what it is oh it's one of these ones it says here that in a moment let's go into that pub Kim um that's pub a med never mind that's pub med so this thing is for novel drug testing interesting so we got some graphs here similar articles and whatnot fascinating but let's see what else we can find architecture of this so it is in the bacterial group definitely and it has this family and order and let's look this up in a more broader sense so it says here it's a gram positive spherical bacteria well obviously which is alpha hemolytic under aerobic conditions or a beta aerobic under anaerobic conditions so it's able to breathe without mitochondria and use glycolysis which glycolysis just turns um sugar into um and this called pyruvate and back it's something that ours ourselves can normally do on its own as well without using mitochondria so let's see it takes asymmetrical healthy carriers typically colonized respiratory tracts send juice and nasal cavity however in subzero individuals with weaker immune systems such as elderly young and children and become pathogens spread locations to contest disease so this thing is a direct thing to like a to like bugs commonly occurred phenomenon middle with melagitis in children and in the elderly oh and community acquire phenomena oh and those are symptoms and those affected with HIV oh that makes so much sense oh oh wow these guys these guys do a lot it looks infection disease symptoms they do have a vaccine interesting so it's one of those types I see well that's actually very good to know but it's presenting with the protein target is this the same one as we're looking at hang on a moment is this the same one if it's the same one I'm I wouldn't be surprised oh yeah yes it is it is the same what else can we find about this so any Emmy it's an enzyme that causes random hydrolysis oh that catalyzes the random hydrolysis hydrolysis is basically known as water breaking while there is a thing known as dehydration synthesis which combines water together it's actually quite interesting when you look at it like that and there's its enzyme classification which that is a thing that does happen so let's look at this a little bit more in a deeper perspective so it has one component to what it does and that's its ligament Edo and E do is what is what is this in let's see CCDC hmm this disposition number enticing also that's what it looks like on a 3D view okay there's ammonia there I don't know why ammonia is there though or this molecule I don't know why both of those are there but it it works in a nutshell I guess not really a lot of good in that I don't do that and I I'm confused and I don't think I ever used this website so yeah but I do use this website a lot so in this chemical sense it is an irritant uh C2H3O2 why does that sound familiar so let's see ethylene glycol is a clear colorless syrup liquid the primary hazard is a threatening environment immediate steps should be taken to limit the spread to the environment since it is a liquid it can easily penetrate the soil and contaminate groundwater and nearby streams looks like it has a chemical safety or irritant which I think if it gets on skin it's gonna feel very good so let's see ethanol glycol synthetic liquid substance that absorbs water it's odorless and has a sweet taste to make it and is also used to make antifreeze and deicing solution for cars oh that's actually interesting it's also used in hydraulic brake fluid and inks used to stamp pads ballpen pins and print shops huh so this is a wonder chemical that's actually very good to know and it does fit the criteria but I think it's due to it's um it's due to its nature oh okay now I'm looking at the chemical and connecting the pieces with between the hydrolysis and the hundred and dehydration synthesis this makes sense as a enzyme now because since this is its only ligament that makes so much sense as it's ligament and it's only ligament as it's small molecule let's look at the 3D model and 3D view of where this thing would be at so let's get rid of the water we don't need water and now let's get rid of the polymer itself so it looks like it has several sites of it to be honest when looking at this so so yeah these are the things whoo and now let's bring back the polymer and let's see here if I go to here no that's not what I wanna go do bring it back bring it back so let's go to water um chain and okay there we go so let's go to chain attach it here and it looks like that none of these are actually truly connected it's a strange feeling but yet it's also so real I mean it makes sense yes it makes sense why these things are not really um connected but it is however in a liquid base up liquid base so what's with this it's the confusing um alright let's look at here let's look here um and let's see I'm gonna try to put it into a full screen but I don't know how to do that yet so I I'm still learning how to use this so it looks like a very big chain I don't know how it's connecting the others though let's see if I go to the representation um let's go bone stick oh my god that's a mess that is a massive an enzyme but if we look at it carefully let's look at this carefully I don't know why it's connected to these ligaments though that's that's a fair point to make but why is it connected yeah I'm gonna need this back let's go back to ethia for a moment and let's look at more on in some physical traits look there's a Wikipedia article for it nice all right so experimental properties let's go so we know it is a primary threat to the environment immediate steps should be taken to limit its spread but why why is this thing dangerous to the environment it's because it's made for antifreeze or is it something else why is this place why is this thing dangerous and I wouldn't okay I think it's based upon the solubility so it says here that it has is miserable in water very soluble in acetone and alcohol and in methyl chloride and practically insoluble in fatty oils and mineral oil very soluble in water methyl chloride very slightly soluble in alcohol practically insoluble in fatty oils and mineral oil okay and it looks like it is very soluble in water hmm interesting has vapor density vapor pressure in certain degrees log P I don't know what log P technically is there's its viscosity and there's its spectra looks like that's how it's able to find it huh I are a spectra don't really need that there's some related records though chemical vendor oh yeah no that's not really what I need or clinical trials I need to look at some of these clinical trials though let's see here this is where I basically need it's pharmaceutical and biochemical logic so it has a classification so it's in AC yeah I can't really say that too much it's the classification of drug it's reused for classification so apparently this thing is used in drugs which I'm not surprised due to its properties um track and metabolism drugs for constipation uh thank you thank you I I think thanks for that I guess so let's see during four hours of doses of that's in glycol urine urinary extraction fourteen C more rapid from from rats and thirty eight percent than resin monkeys but extrusion is expelled air was similar about five percent entered a carbon pool hmm some study of renal clearance in this interesting that is that is very interesting actually now that I think about it that does make sense considering the bacteria that actually has this chemical in it inside its enzyme is very very much and it says that it's used for spreading right like this thing is used to spread if I'm not mistaken like did I say that before but now since I'm looking at the structure itself it makes sense and knowing the knowing this and what the chemical does itself makes sense it makes sense to everything about it let's see here on other things so it's still about urine still about urine so a dosed independent change was observed in a disposition or a part of the dose was expired as carbon dioxide and decreased from thirty nine and twenty and two hundred milligrams and two kilograms kilograms to twenty six at at a thousand and two thousand and we're still talking about the urinary gland on this so what the metal so what the metabolism and metabolic things does that have multiple multiple metabolies contributes to its toxic effects plus glycolide and like glaxiate more toxic than glycolate although latter it is only metabolic that accumulates owing rate limits lactic dehydration which I'm not surprised isn't isn't it the chemical hydralate lysis which makes sense I don't know considering I gotta look at um hydrinates itself but it does look like it is spread through sugar oxalate components with calcium and calcium oxalate crystals which are deposition in various tissues okay that does make sense although oxalate normally is a minor metabolic product ethyl glycol metabolism and you're we're still talking about P urinary oxalate crystals are common but are invariable features of ethanol glycol intoxication these are there are two forms of urinary calcium oxalate crystals the oxahedral or tense shaped from form of a dihydrate crystal in in the prism or dumbbell shape monohydrate the latter form is stable under normal psychological conditions the dehydrated form appears only during high urinary calcium and oxalate concentrations as seen in ethyl glycol poisoning oh that that makes so much sense the dihydrate can form can transform into monohydrate form okay that's actually interesting in oxidative metabolism metabolisms and ethyl glycol and mammal species variation occurs which explain difference in toxicity likely activated by major pathways into carbon dioxide and by minor pathways to oxalic acid extend formation of oxalate acid is dependent on those levels but has seen to show to various if speak to vary with species and it looks like this is an experiment with a subject to rabbits and rats rabbits and rats was eliminated in the urine oh it's talking about twenty and thirty percent of ethyl glycol was eliminated in the urine unchanged in a trace of low dick acid so it does have some correlation so that's actually interesting in the metabolism side of this and I'm pretty sure when I'm editing this video it's gonna make things interesting and I'll be like oh so let's see here biological half life I am not too much in this but we'll see about this ingestion of two alcohols resulted in particular intoxication due to metabol so it says here it says prolonged to fourteen hours thank you Dave D V and F and also the hazardous substance data bank thank you for that And also the hazardous substance data bank, thank you for that. It looks like all these are from the same thing, so it looks like we're gonna have to continue. Hepatolytic metaboli- metabolism occurs through successive oxidation by the enzyme alcohol dehydrinase. Oh, I know about that one. The elimination half-life of ethanol glycol of the substance of alcohol hydrinase. Hmm, so that, okay, so apparently, um, alcohol dehydrinase can beat um, hydrinase like this? Interesting, I did not know about that. Um, it beats its ability to interact. So enzyme defeats enzyme properly, it makes sense that it would be used as a it would make sense for it to be used as a inhibitor. Is 2.5 to 3 hours. So if alcohol dehydrinase inhibitor therapy is instituted before development of renal insufficiencies, the elimination half-life lessens to approximately 17 hours. Wait, is it worse or more? Mostly via normal or in renal elimination. Wait, doesn't make it better or worse? So let's see, the elimination of ethoclycol and the absence of alcohol dehydrinase. Oh, it's the eliminate, it's eliminate, oh, it's absent, oh, okay. In the presence of formalysol, the elimination half-life is increased approximately 20 hours. So it says here in the presence of form of bezol, which I don't know what form of bezol is, but I'm curious. After IV administration of 2200,000, 2000 of ethanol glycol, the blood clearance occurred initially rapid phase about three to four, five hours of its half-life. Rats were exposed nose only to the ethanol glycol vapor at concentration of 32 milligrams per liter for 30 minutes. After six hours, blood declined, but it appeared first order kinetics with a half-life of 53 hours. Huh. I literally forgot what, um, kinetics is. But it looks like the plasma half, half-lives and rodents, monkeys and dogs receiving about 1 to 1,000. Oh, it's talking about blood plasma rates, and this is the blood levels decline. Oh, okay, that, that makes sense. So mechanism of action, ethanol glycol is metabolically is metabolized by alcohol dehydrinase to, to glycolide, which is, which is then metabolized to glycolic, glycolic and oxalic acid. These acids with excess lactic acid are responsible for in iron gap, metallic acidosis. Again, it's basically dehydration and hydrolysis. Recipitating with calcium to form insoluble calcium oxalate crystals. Tissue injuries is caused by widespread deposition of oxalate crystals and the toxic effects of glycolic and glycolic acid. Huh. So it's metabolized by alcohol dehydrinase, even though it's a totally different protein than than this is, which is in use of its sequence. In this case, the same thing is being used in this, which it says, it, hold on a moment, let's look at this. Um, spreading through extracellular maze, matrix, again, it's outside of the cell using the glycol micros and screening. See choose and terminal. This is saying to this thread, secondary acidic licking hydrinase. Scattering and solution to small and hmm. This is interesting. It's from the Department of Biochemistry and Microbiology in the University of Victoria Bridge, Columbia in Canada. Interesting, I, I'm actually interested in this, cuz holy crap. Hmm. It's related to this protein. And with its other different types of it, I, I'm sup- I am not surprised by the amount of mutations this thing has. Anyway, moving on. And it looks like, okay, cell location in the cytoplasm or extracellular, okay, so that makes sense. In human, it also makes sense in, it's not just human that it makes sense, and it makes sense in the bacteria as well, cuz it is used to identify stuff. Which apparently a lot of enzymes are used for that, specific moments, hmm. Oh, here's some, um, biochemical reactions, which I definitely need. So here are three items used for this, it is reacting with ethanol glycol and NAD to make H, so, alright, so this is a interesting biochemical reaction for this chemical. And then we got H2O and ethanol, another, another important reaction, I would assume. And here's some more, oh, these are for pathways. Which is in bio, okay, so it looks like it's in different toxicologies too, which is great for me. So let's look at separate chorus for musuma. Okay, so it looks like this is in the pheusominis. And then there is eclaria icola. Or icoli. Hmm. It looks like it doesn't really match up too much. But let's look at this one. It looks like a follow, oh, no, wait, um, the one that we're looking at is green and positive, this one's grand negative. Which they're totally different bacteria. It looks like I can't find the thing for this, which is sad. Cuz I really wanted to look at this thing a bit closer. Huh. Ding, I, I think I got water around here. Sorry, microphone, oh, sorry, phone. I'm just trying to get water. Anyway. So it's using antifreeze and cooling and heating system, hydraulic brakes. And see, this chemical's used for a lot of things, ethanol D, D, I, oh, my goodness. Dude, you got yourself a really good this thing has a pretty good amount of this chemical. And it looks like it doesn't really change its shape too much either, if, if I'm So let's look at experiments, and this is used in diffraction, ex- refinement software, um, there's not a lot to go by. Um, genome, genome, huh? No genome aligners. Sequence binding sites, EDO, EDOU, EDOU. Okay, so these are all my EDO binding sites. So it looks like it does have them, let's look at this sequence a little bit. So conflict is over here. Huh. Fascinating. But it looks like it's a plus, 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 plus. Hmm, and it looks like this is the only one it does have in its first chain, but, which means it's the only chain. Artifat, um, buried or residues, like different sites from. So we got binding site here, and then we got binding site here. Instance J, instance I, there's a lot of instances. And we got cyst, cyst peptide, never, so it's binding site to EDO, I get that, and EDO is a great chemical. Here's what I'm looking at here. And it's used for antifreeze and it's, I gotta relook at the videos in order to get into it a lot more. So this is a warning, warning, it's a bit toxic, see the diamond. Um, a health risk, um, it does have a fire risk, preheating before ignition can occur. Materials required considerable preheat under all ambient temperature before ignition or combustion can occur. Two, materials can undergo emergency sick, conditions can cause temporary incapacitation or residual injuries, which makes sense, cuz this chemical looks pretty powerful, I'm not gonna lie. Explosion, it has a lower explosive flammable limit game. Um. Okay, so it does ca- so yeah, it, the irritation symbol does make sense. So I would handle this chemical in very, very, very safely. And also try to make sure it avoids the skin and eyes, cuz it's especially in mucous membranes, cuz it will irritate. That's not, that explains the, um, environment situation though. And let's see here, eyes, victims, contacts, lens, okay, so, yeah, the flush, okay, that's what it is. Immediately transport the victims after flushing eyes to the hospital even with no symptoms. Skin immediately flooded with water while removing all isolated and contaminated clothing, that's right, you gotta get naked. Do not take that out of context. Immediately leave the contaminated water, take deep breaths of fresh air. If symptoms such as wheezing, coughing, shortness of breath, or burning in the mouth or chest develop, call physician. Oh, so that's where in, in, in heal nation. So yeah, treat this thing with respect. So, alright, so let's see here. So general information, initial treatment, primary supportive treatment physician for the first 36 minutes should include asbestos to aspirate the stomach contents. Ethoclycol rapid, rapid absorbs rapidly from gastrointestinal tract. Gastic aspiration by using gastro gastric tube may be useful. So an antidote is formalysol, which apparently in what we found out in the identification, it's not the identification, it's the biochemistry of it. If we go to the biochemistry aspect of it, it says he, it mentioned formal formalhalol, somewhere around here. Ah, here it is. Oh, it's this chemical, it's corrosive. It's also irritable. But it looks like it's great for handling it though. In a physician's case, but why? Oh, it increases its half-life, which, again, I'm not too familiar with half-life. So if anyone can clarify what a half-life does, um, bring it down on, down below. Mostly via normal renal elimination. So yeah, I don't know what the half-life is. But I might have to look it up. A physical danger, uh, vapors or heavy thin air. Interesting. So with eyes, immediately remove the patient from the source of exposure, wash, seek medical attention, ingestion. Do not induce vomiting. Treat seizures with Diazepam under the position, oh my goodness. Yeah, these are bad. Do not ingest chemicals that you shouldn't, it's bad. Very, very bad. Oh, what, what's going on, what happened, some idiot ingests this. Under hard function, evaluate blood pressure and normal heart rhythm, reduce respiratory function. AKA, the, the wife struggles with respiratory. Evaluate for low blood sugar, electrolyte disperusion, low oxygen level, seek medical attention immediately, okay, that's So yeah, do not, do, do, don't. So let's see here, toxicology summary, chemical for numerous, and, again, this stuff is used in antifreeze. So, so don't, don't, do not. Redness, irritation, decom- decom- decontamination. They got stages where the ingestion stage. In order to be this precise about it. Oh yeah, I forget antifreeze is a thing to some people, so that explains the stages. Oh my, sensual nervous system. Ah. Ah. Oh my goodness. What, what? National toxicology program stuff. You guys went ham on this. What am I, oh my god. This probably has happened too many times. Finally, I went to any ecological information. Oh, what? Alright, I know it's used for ink, ink, antifreeze, and a whole whines of uh, fluid airport runways by drilling fluid, it will result in the direct release into uh, fluid airport runways by drilling fluid will result in the direct release into an environment. Uh, let's see, immune. Terrestrial fade based on the classification scheme one, zero two with elimination estimation with a two. Again, what, what does this do? And it's Texas soil sandy lift. Okay. Uh, I don't know. Let's just say it's bad in order for to assume. Alright, reported for fish. Oh my goodness. Um, what does this do? Oh, my goodness. There's just so much about this chemical. Oh my goodness, there's like twenty one different sources about this chemical. I picked a good one is what I did. Oh my goodness. There are two thousand different protein bonded structures with this thing. Fifty nine pump chem genes are used for this. And in, can't believe I'm saying this. Five different pathways are involved. I'm gonna have to look at each different pathway now cuz I am curious. Classification. Oh my god. It's still going. Oh my god. Oh my goodness, I, oh my. Whew, that was, that was a trip. Hope you guys enjoy, please. Like, or, or anything. Come follow me for gaming stuff for on stream and see ya. Well, that's, it's, it's too much information.